Studio 255 returns in the Laramie Plain Civic Center with the Talk Shop and our in-studio guest, Brandon Newman, City Council member. What ward are you representing?
Ward two.
Ward two, I think that's mine. I always forget, I always forget. My diligence is not detailed enough when it comes to all of that. But in Studio 255 right now for your questions, should you like to call in? 460-3087, your opportunity to do so and give us a jingle, give us a text. RadioWorks@mail.com, M-A-I-L dot com, your opportunity to weigh in or stop in. You're welcome at Studio 255 in the Laramie Plain Civic Center. The doors are open and we'll have you as a guest right now. We ended last segment talking a little bit about public comment and an added feature to the agenda. What's the strength of that particular public comment? Consideration of changes in the agenda and setting the agenda. Public request to remove a consent agenda item and place it on the regular agenda to allow for public comments. However, interestingly enough, in parentheses, no public comment will be taken during this item. Items will be considered at the discretion of the council, available in person and web conferencing in print. Now, if you want the input, why wouldn't you at least have a 30-second question that comes with this? And that might provide opportunity for all council members to actually understand with greater depth what's going behind the citizens' request to do so, pulling it out of consent agenda. Do you have a comment on that, Brandon?
Yeah, that was my first thought when I first wanted to put this in the agenda. And I do like the 30 seconds of why. Why should we pull something? Is there something we're overlooking? Now, that is a double-edged sword because if a citizen wants something pulled, maybe we should just pull it. And I think that's kind of what council was looking at. But then when Brett came on Zoom and asked to pull that, nobody did it. So it's kind of one of those double-edged swords. I'll tell you, and I've been called out for this this start of the year because I'm the one that ran on transparency. I talk about transparency. Yet I have stopped public comment twice, I think now, maybe three times. And then when this happened, I didn't pull the item either. But I promise you, I'm here for the public comment. And I reached out to Brett and let him know, like, if you could have told me why, I probably would have pulled it because his email told me why. And he sent us all an email. I think he sent it to council@cityoflermy.org. So it probably went to all of us, but I am for public comment. I don't think this allows that, like we were, like council intended.
Well, this stands as one of those points of inconsistency in the current council's 2025 operations. In the resume of work, it stands as an opportunity where, yeah, we say, we really given lip service. I mean, this was one where I almost commented, though I try to be direct to things. I've been out of order through, I didn't recognize that a work session was exactly the same protocols as a regular session. It was a work session. I thought they were looser. I thought that that was... But most concerning was the lack of Mayor Comby's interest in gaining clarification. So to me, it's completely proper. Bang the gavel, you're out of order, Mr. Henderson. One more and you're out of here, or whatever the protocol, the rules denote. But if you're truly interested in public comment, educate. How is it possible to follow up on something where your question went completely avoided? It was bypassed, and that's the reason that I brought it up. The incident was L triple C President Schaefer didn't answer my question with respect to housing being provided for Albany County campus as opposed to Laramie County campus, Albany County and Laramie County. And didn't get answered. It acknowledged what I said, which I didn't look for affirmation. I looked for...
An answer.
I looked for an answer. And in not getting one, I injected when he was finished. I didn't interrupt him. But I hadn't raised my hand. I thought it was a work session and we were interested in work getting done. That conversation could have been done. He didn't stick around after council meetings, after his comments were done. He was out of there. He didn't tap me on the shoulder exiting and indicate he cared with respect to what that question was that I didn't get. Nor did Mayor Comby say, "Mr. Henderson, obviously you have something. In the future, please raise your hand, educate the public on Zoom and every other possible way, and then about the rule of order, and then get to it. What's your question?" Now, obviously you have a question or you wouldn't have interrupted. You could have slapped me again. Another shot in the wrist. Bring the ruler. I'm here for you, sister. I'm here for you. But I spoke to Mayor Comby after that meeting, and she acknowledged that that was possible and that she could have done that. She was new. And how much treatment of the public gets done because there's a transition or there's new or there's... Hey, Mayor Comby, I'm gonna give you props because you have doubled the time delay between a call for public comments when it gets acknowledged, doesn't always get acknowledged. In fact, you, Councilman Newman, interrupted me during the minute into my public comment on something that had been removed from the agenda by being tabled. And this council as a whole had not taken public comment on tabling this matter. So when I went to the podium, I thought that you all removed it and it was open and available for my three minutes. And I got into it, not a full three minutes. You yourself called the matter to, you know, it was in first reading. It's still in first reading. It'll be this week that it'll continue in that.
Which one is this?
This is the billboards.
No, it's continued until May.
Okay.
Because we have a work session in April.
There's a work session on it. Very good. Well, in any event, there's some inconsistencies of meeting protocols that they could strongly be improved.
I agree. And that's what I tried to do. I think if I had one complaint about council since I've started, it's the rules and procedures because we have our rules and procedures. And if we don't mention anything in those rules and procedures, then we go down to Robert's rules.
I had seven items. Why'd you interrupt me?
Because realistically, we should have been following the rules. And nobody else seems to want to call that point of order, which is why I am getting beat up right now because I'm the one that keeps doing it, right? But if we're gonna have...
Nancy does it.
If we have rules...
Nancy does it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
She does it periodically.
There are council members who say something, I guess. I haven't heard them, but that's just my opinion. But if we're gonna have rules, let's follow them, which is why the work session, one of our first work sessions was, what rules and procedures do we need to change? Well, I got called point of order many times because I was, you know, when an item comes to the floor, staff gets to present it, right? And then council gets to ask questions, and then it goes to the public, and then it comes back to council for comments. That wasn't a written rule. So I just had comments, so I wanted to say them in the beginning, like, hey, here's my comment. Think about this as the public is talking or staff is gonna represent something. And then you guys can have a discussion, but here's my comment. And I got called point of order twice, and I was just like, there is no point of order. So you can't call that on me. But I shut up, put my hands down. I made a comment under my breath that I know other people heard. But I was like, let's go into this work session, let's change these rules, but let's follow them. If we're gonna represent the city and we're gonna represent ourselves, we have to follow them. So it wasn't fair, in my opinion, and I know I talked to you afterwards. It wasn't fair, in my opinion, that it was voted on and now there's public comment on it. The public comment needed to go to the next one.
It should have been on the tabling.
And it should have been. And I think I reached out because somebody else reached out, maybe it was Brett. I don't remember. But that was 100% on council that we missed that public comment. And I took the blame for it as well because I missed it too.
Do you see how the public can see these type of omissions and errors as a lack of interest? I mean, this item five, where Brett Glass asked, seems to indicate we made up our mind. And during 2024 council group's action, we used to get leadership in the meeting which would call for public comment, seeing none were moving on. I mean, it was that fast. Now, in county commissioner Terry Jones leads the meeting.
I like how she does it.
First call, second call, third call. And a longer pause on the third call as a matter of style.
Yeah, I like how she does it.
And I dig it. I really dig it. Not only, I mean, does the podium... Look, you know how many shows I do where I only have me, myself, and I. It's sad, right? This is an opportunity for the community. Come on, come to the table. Don't beat me up on social media and be void in Studio 255. The door's open. Red carpet syrup. I'll pour you coffee. I'll give you a cold drink.
He will do that.
I'll bring you a cold drink. Now, so it just seems like errors and omissions like this stack up. And the overall message is, zip it. We don't want to hear from you. We're only doing so because as a matter of law, we have to.
I think council wants to listen. I truly do.
And if that is happening at city council, what's happening in county commission? Or what's happening in committees that lead up to? Is that going? Are they getting, you would think the public would get more comment opportunity there. But the education and the awareness of what's on the agenda for a planning commission meeting, it's not as readily known.
I don't even know if people come to those. All my committees or commissions.
I don't have a routinized marker in my calendar, but I probably should. And I need to be more diligent about it. And y'all split up 50 committee assignments where y'all volunteer for it. You don't get paid for that time. I personally find it that although the schedule might not be $150 an hour, I do believe that there should be something that is cognizant of the time. It should at least be a marker. I don't care if it's $10. I believe that it should recognize you attended.
And we have too many.
I think that that documentation, look, if it's important, put a dollar to it. If it is, I mean, they're talking pennies in terms of the value of public interaction.
Compared to some of the other budgets, right?
Compared to, I mean, if you just look at the efficiencies and success of the ranch manager, the ranch hand that's looking after water utilization, crop, you know, turning dollar on purchased ranch properties for the city of Laramie. He's 10Xing for our community according to the presentations.
He gets up, gives backs, and no BS.
And I'm sorry, but he has me engaged the entire time. I can honestly say that there are 35 and 50-minute presentations that I've sat through just this year alone by city staff that have... They compete with snails crawling. And they are almost, they almost indicate to me, we want you to go on a doze so that this gets passed the way we want it, the way we recommend it, and the city council will stamp it accordingly. Now, if you don't want that perception, guys, don't conduct the meetings this way. Consider that if you get a packet from city staff, I don't expect you need a 50-minute presentation on this. You should have been doing that kind of depth in a prior committee. Maybe a work session is where that's going and that's why it is. I mean, work session strategy is there's usually two or three primary items and it's a work session. It's not a city council meeting. But these meetings, they get to where they, I don't know. I personally think a 20-minute is limit. You ought to have a 15-minute warning. Maybe it correlates to how many millions we're spending or, you know, anything up to here is 10 or 15 minutes. This is 20 or whatever. It seems that the message is confused. It's conflicted.
Yeah, I've made a couple of comments. I've talked to city manager about it as well. I talked to the mayor and I'm like, man, these meetings are all going till nine. Past councils, we were out at eight. Sometimes, I think 7:30 was like our fastest kind of thing. But these are all going to nine, and I think part of it is like staff's presentations are getting a little longer and then...
Well, the number of thank yous and shoulder patting each other on the back is growing as this term goes on as well. And they all add up.
They do. They do.
And you're getting 150 an hour. You're getting 150 a session each. There are those of us who don't make a penny and we're dutifully doing our best to cover so that media don't get the claim that it's not being covered. I was at a meeting Monday night, March 17th, and Representative Chestick made a comment in that session. They said, "Media didn't cover this." I wanted to stand up and say, "Representative Chestick, did you forget my email and your return call denying me the opportunity to speak on any matter of interest? You didn't even ask me what I was interested in or what I wanted to discuss." How involved or caring can you be if that's the conduct that you do? Now, in all of 2022 Candidate Awareness Tour and all of the Candidate Awareness Tour 2024 on the Talk Shop, each and every public candidate for office invited, many verbally, all invited otherwise. Now, that call in that invitation, always on air, always open. And by the way, the Candidate Awareness Tour for 2026 is open. Joseph Kibler for governor of Wyoming, first to attend that opportunity and be introduced. You can catch that for a limited time only on Facebook. We're working to capture those videos and catalog them and set up a server to where there'll no longer be that risk of losing interviews because it's a social media platform's interest this way or that way. We don't want to be losing great content for people to make their voting decisions by that. So these are adaptations that we're doing. Facebook had allowed something to never be deleted, but that's until March 2025. And then by the end of March 2025, and this is important for all you with your family, your family videos or friends or... You know, it takes a village to raise a child, and it takes these moments that sometimes you never get them back. You may have lost a loved one. Don't lose your videos. Go back in, find out what's going on, research it, ask Google, how do I back up all my Facebook videos before they're deleted? Because this is a going fact. It's happening, and it is what it is. But the messages are conflicted right now, and I appreciate anything you can do to square it up, square it up for the people and walk the talk. I had seven points that I felt were important on that particular billboard matter. And I listened to council that weren't paying attention to Philip Gabathuler's presentation where he said this fact or that fact. He put it out. It's right in my notes. Maybe if you need to take notes, take notes because to go and revisit something, to clarify is one thing. But to go back and absolutely only duplicate the effort is like you're doing it for effect. And I didn't know that that was really what's... And meanwhile, not only myself, you're in there, and by the way, I'm waiting for a three-minute public comment while Philip Gabathuler does a 35-minute-plus presentation and reiterates, not less than three times, the city staff's recommendation. Once you've made the recommendation, I think you're done. And it's time for the guest speaker to speak, and that would have been Megan Getz that evening. And, you know, she's efficient. She's respectful of my time. Why isn't city staff equally so in that measure? And I give Gabathuler grief on this point, but I also thank him because upon request, that meeting, he met me Friday that same week and we zoomed my concerns in greater depth on some of the points of light that, you know... The University of Wyoming has probably the brightest, most brilliant display that's street-side and definitely hits all of the points of concern that city staff made for business and commercial, private interests. But the university gets a pass as they're on sovereign ground and there's a different ordinance with respect to the University of Wyoming. Well, that shouldn't be the citizens' detriment. And if it is the citizens' detriment, I'd like to know what is being done in meetings or communication with this body to resolve these grave concerns that are a matter of record for the public commerce area, but not for the other. Now, I'm talking about 2317, the corner of 23rd and Grand, where you have the Marion H. Rochelle Gateway Center with a brilliant, to me, it's fantastic. It's a fantastic lighted display, though it's vertical. It's quite similar to that vibrance that we could expect in a digital billboard brought to council for consideration and amending and allowing their five existing billboards from 2009.
I think the whole ordinance needs to be looked at from 2009, but...
And the current council, well, there were five that, four of five, that ran as a slate essentially. Promoting business was their thing. And one of my seven points was, walk your talk, folks. How can you decline a technical upgrade to a billboard situation that you grandfathered as-is, right? We grandfathered it, which denotes we don't want you anymore. And that was the council's purview back in 2009 perhaps. Has it changed? Maybe it has. And if it has, which I think it might have, then don't waste time of yourselves and public belaboring it. Get after it. And decide maybe densities, maybe competition should be integrated, maybe some other consideration. The other point that I had was council getting into price fixing for matters of how much advertising would cost. That's great concern for me. You do not regulate the price of cheeseburgers in China any more than you should advertising rates in Laramie. This is not taxi cab driving, and I don't even necessarily believe you should do that. I believe in open commerce. I believe that if you want to get in a cab and you want to pay $5 a mile or whatever it is, that's your choice. If I want to negotiate it down, also my choice, but it comes down to revenue, doesn't it? It comes down to, we want to know that for every mile driven, you're gonna have it metered and we're gonna get a cut.
Right.
And guess what? You do the same with advertising dollars in this realm as well. I mean, man, how many times do we get a bite at the apple, right? Parking fees were changed. Let's not forget billboards. But parking matter, we went from $10 a ticket when enforced to $40, reducible to?
20.
20, if paid.
I think it's seven days. Yeah, timely. I think it's seven.
And regardless of that, there's a neat opportunity at every turn to make money. What's the money going to? Does it pay for those extra city council meetings that you get with the public?
Who knows?
Not currently.
Yeah, not currently.
Not currently. But back to billboards. In that regard, you interjected that the topic, my comment should have been delayed and went to that. And I respect you for that. I give you grief because you're here. It's you and me. And frankly, you can take it. And I appreciate that you value that part of the role that you chose to be elected, Ward two, city council.
I knew it wouldn't be easy. And I knew if we have rules that we need to follow or I disagree with something and vote a different way than probably some people would, that I'd get backlash for it, right? And I knew all that going into running for council and then my first term, or my first two years of my first term. I got some backlash too because I did some things that people didn't like and voted ways that people probably didn't like. But that's a good thing about this setting. It's a good thing about everybody has my email. I mean, I got text messages. I get phone calls. Let's have dialogue, right? You don't like something that I did. Let's talk about it and find out why. And maybe you saw it a different way than I did or whatever that case is. So, and back to Brett's thing, pulling something off, I think we still, and I told him in the email, we need to change that. We need to, you need some sort of public. Or I'm just gonna start pulling everything that people ask, which is probably what should happen. But I don't want to be the only council member doing that, right? So I think we still need some change. I think we went in the right direction. We just need to make a little bit of a right turn.
Tweak it from there.
Right, from where it is now.
Now, I don't sense from any other council member that they're adamantly opposed to that. I'm sure that decisions like this make sense when they happen, but then in application, it's probably a different...
Right now, we need to tweak it.
And day one, you saw an opportunity to change it perhaps. So what other topics are exciting for the city right now? You know, there was, there were Third Street activity as I was coming into Studio 255 this morning.
Open my email while you're talking.
And yeah, grab it. Grab it. Is that on the agenda? Grab it.
So the Third Street, I think we've got, at least I personally have, and some of it's been through Facebook on the Third Street, what we're doing there. I'll comment on the...
Curved bulbs and installing that.
I think it'll look a lot better. It'll match some of the other stuff.
Are we doing drainage?
I hope so. No.
Infrastructure, wildlands?
Because we already did that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we did, we might be upgrading some of the drainage, but I know like last year when it was all tore up, we were putting all the new water lines and stuff underneath it.
Because nothing quite as amazing to me is going down Third Street after it's newly surfaced and then...
There's a pothole.
And it's got the rolling effect because we had to dig up a section afterwards.
And that's something that I've been fighting in West Laramie too. Everybody's like, pave West Laramie, West Laramie. We will. We'll get to it, but we gotta do the stuff underneath it because I'm like you. I don't want to pave something. Something breaks underneath it, now I have to go A.
That's black gold.
Right. Dig up what we just did and waste more city staff and city money. And now we have a fix-it, so let's fix everything under it, which is what I think they did. I did see the city put out some stuff trying to help some of the businesses affected by like closing the sidewalk and Third Street.
Yeah, there was some promotion for businesses open and shop Laramie kinda added.
Yeah, I think we're doing a better job this time than last year, helping those.
What relief exists for businesses that substantially are impacted by that? Maybe they show three years of revenue prior to this year, and this year, this is here. Does the state subsidize them in any percentage?
I have no idea that. I would like to see if we could come up with a grant going forward to where maybe it's something to that... To where maybe it's something to that effect, you know, here's three years and then like. Maybe not even three years, like the, the months, you know, three years of those months that we're closing third street or whatever down.
Councilman Newman, you start suggesting ideas for spending city money. Is that your role?
Right, so, uh, in.
I like it. I mean, I like the consideration.
On the, um, you know, Harriet was here, um, and.
Harriet Hagaman? Congresswoman Hagaman. At the Albany Town Hall, the Albany County Town Hall, and that was quite an affair.
It was. One of the, one of the, I think it, it might've been our Republican state or, uh, uh, chair. Uh, no, not chair, uh, state committee man got up and asked the question, how can we bring Doge, um, to, to Laramie? And somebody tapped me on the shoulder and I was like, yeah, and he goes, isn't that your job? And, and it kinda is, right? The only difference is I'm elected, um, and those guys aren't in. Um, but that kinda is.
But he is appointed by though, that individual who was, um, elected by the American people.
Right, whether you like that or not. It's there, but.
He asked about how to do that in the state.
We, we do it, right? I'm on the finance committee. I go line by line, everything we spend once a month. With two other counselors and then when we go to these meetings and vote on it, that's all line items too, right? So realistically, yeah, I think I can talk about how to spend some money, cause we do it.
Maybe, maybe, maybe that citizen and others, and I, and I do know who, who made that. Who made that interjected that question, but I do, I do respectfully say, show up to the meetings and. And if you as council, follow some of these protocols and take public comment. At every opportunity, then you might get those points of light that you're asking for. Or, you know, and, and, and maybe not. I mean, look at, look at parking, a hundred and five people plus. Show up to chambers in May two thousand twenty-four, lend comment and concern about abating a lease and terminating a lease. That we have rely, we have to rely on till twenty forty-two, the year two thousand forty-two. Which by my calculation is a long time away, but not that far away. But instead of looking at making a purchase of that property and, and resolving, speaking something immediately by the city. And engaging in that and letting the public know, hey, we're talking. If these people wanna sell it and they wanna do something with it, then perhaps we re, you know, we respond in kind. Purchase it from them and resolve a community concern.
Did you hear that property got sold?
And in December, apparently that, that closed and is, is now, uh, owned by the stencil group. Who issued their concern that, oh, wait a minute. I didn't think this was gonna be anything but postponed. I thought this was a done deal. What goes on with someone thinking that it's a done deal? It's that hopeful, uh, perspective is, or was there? Action by some that they consulted with that gave them that feeling? That, uh, cause I, I, I found his comment genuine, though in, in the talk shop attempt to interview that individual. Uh, I, I never got a response from stencil group on three, three calls to stencil group in South Dakota. Uh, their choice and, and maybe, maybe an offer to purchase was on the table. The entirety, maybe, maybe that, that existed, uh, owners at the time, John Garen and, uh. Bolin, Mr. Bolin, uh, now whether it was or wasn't, I don't know. It's none of my business, but it is my, it is my concern. That council was not fast in. That opportunity in exploring that opportunity, at least publicly, maybe behind closed doors y'all had, but. I don't, I don't get that. I don't understand. It's like we wanna kick, kick issues down the, kick.
I don't know when staff reached out to those, um, those owners of the two lots, um, I have no idea when that happened. Um, and then we found out, I think I found out what a month ago, maybe something like that, that, that it, it did get sold and I was like, well, that guy.
And I wanna welcome people. If you buy, if you buy property or you're interested, I'm excited that somebody wants to buy. From anywhere else, property in, in our community and they wanna do neat things with it. But in this case, I hope we're not going down just another version, which challenges all the other. Problems that we haven't solved yet, parking being one of them for retail and historic downtown Laramie. And parking doesn't have to be a loss. It can be a revenue generator in, in some respects. So I would think that city staff might, might duly be entertained by that. And I don't know what the water table is. I don't know how low we could go in order to have, have that, uh, that lower level parking as well as upper. Above grade, ground grade, uh, parking, but we're talking about aesthetics that. They're not likely to change for fifty plus years. I mean, Downey Hall was built in nineteen sixty-five. On Grand in Laramie. Two thousand twenty-five, as soon as the, the new complex, North and South Hall. As I understand, they're looking to name those. Are going to be leading to the closure of Downey Hall, serving as design three hundred and eighty-four individuals, students. At the University of Wyoming, year after year, each one of those years and. Based on utilization, maybe that, uh, maybe that's not happened, but I made, I made question to the council and, and said. Hey, I heard this. I like, I like, uh, I like to know our conversations being held. And I got a, I got a prompt response from, uh, Mayor Cumby that thanked me for my comment and. And referred me to the university as they were sovereign and essentially. Get after it, Eric, uh, which I didn't respond to in kind, but. My view is as city representatives, if you take the role, that's, you're elected to do that. And, and if your suggestion is the conversation, go here, go there. Again, my public comment not valued enough by current council members to. Take it forward. Let's study it. Let's study the possibility. Let's have one meeting. You know, I had lunch with X, Y, and Z, these stakeholders. And we talked about that based on, based on city, city comment. We took that comment and we did this. What could I say as a citizen except to have been invited to the meeting? And there's nothing that would prohibit me being invited to the meeting. I have over twenty years of residence life experience. I, I, I had my first years of student. On campus living in residence hall, which was June at a Downey. And in that time, I have great respect. I have great, I have great insight into how exactly those. Utilized and how, oh, guess what? You're visiting with the one individual who has. Housing director experience at Y O Tech in their program. Back in two thousand one, I also did that. And we were talking off air about where were you when, when nine eleven happened? Well, I came in and, and Weena Bohanik. Was, uh, office manager at that time and in the housing department and we couldn't believe it. Wow. And the second tower just got hit. I mean, it's like, wow, big times. Where were you when? But, but public comment is really powerful, Brandon.
I agree.
And, and I hope that, I hope that the protocol is gonna be, be done where that's concerned, but back to the, to the interest on third street. Micah Richardson spoke about, uh, that could go in deep past, uh, Jubilee. She didn't say. Deep past, she said, she said, uh, that could go through Jubilee Day.
So they're gonna open it for Jubilee Days is my, is what was told us, so, um, we'll have, um. Whether there's, you know, some crappy pavement or whatever, it won't be done. Right, um. And then, um, we do have, we do have a clause in there that if they finish it, I don't know the finish date off the top of my head. But if they do finish it faster, um, there is a, there is a money incentive, kinda like we did with the bridge, um. Uh, north of town, but, uh, so it should be open, uh, should be hopefully. Hopefully it doesn't get prolonged and we can get this, this project done. Um, and, and part of the, part of the conversation that started this was Brett Glass's, uh, pulling nine G. Um, the reason why city staff couldn't do that is there's so many contractors and so many vendors that they would have to deal with. That they couldn't do the other, the other jobs around town. So making this, um, making this agreement with, uh, I think it's Fort Collins Group. Um, that, that's gonna come up and run that project for us. I think it's a great idea, um, that way our city staff can, can look at. At what they need to be doing. And the, the money was already basically allocated. We had to move a little bit more, I believe, but. Um, overall, I think what it's gonna do is it's gonna make third street and grand, um, that intersection more walkable. Uh, more presentable and, and kind of third street, uh, business fronts there.
And you are talking about BHA.
So that's why our city staff, um, but if Brett came up and could have said, hey, like this is why I wanna pull it, I think. I would pull it, but.
I anticipate, I anticipate a pretty responsive group, uh, making some type of consideration with respect to this council. And how they go forward on item five and not to beat the point, I, 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 I don't wanna do that, but I have seen some repeated. I have some, seen some sequential. Omissions and errors that they collect. You get, you know, you get smacked on the hand, that's one thing, but it makes you pay attention to details like. If you're gonna require the public to appear on camera, then. Maybe your city staff should appear on camera also with the same treatment. That inconsistency happened last meeting with, uh, Staff Wood. Uh, in, in presentation of, of, uh, finance matters and I, I respect. Sounded like her. I've heard her. Yeah, there you go. And, and I apologize, but I've heard, I've heard her, but if you have a protocol on, on one hand, then administrate it.
So that, that is in our, that is on our bylaws that staff or council can, can keep their. Um, camera off and I'm trying to remember the, the terms. If there's a safety matter, um, if you're sick. There's like two others, I think, um, and I think that was just a miscommunication. I didn't know why her, uh, I didn't know.
There was nothing stated in public about why it would be off.
Which I think is a, I think that's a learning curve that, um, Mayor Cumby and, and then the four new counselors. Um, are dealing with and even some of us that have only been on the council for two years, like, um, Vice, uh, Mayor Richardson and myself. Like, we're still kinda probably knowing some of the processes, uh.
I wanna go on record. The staff presentation of information from, from this staff member is exceptional. I, I never, I never get a feeling that, that I get anything but the nuts and bolts and. Exactly what I need to know and so I appreciate Wade's work, so.
Yeah, so in, I think, I think just, uh, and this could be a learning curve that, um, Mayor Cumby's having kind of. Like, hey, if somebody's gonna call in sick or zoom in, like, maybe I can make that announcement, um. That way, you know, that public comment never, never would have happened, to be honest, but.
I wanna tell, I wanna tell folks, you know, as so long as I've dedicated my time to be present covering these things. I do not, I do not go without being open to sharing your comments. If you email radioworks@mail.com, copy furnish, uh, council at, at cityoflermy.org. If I have opportunity to interject my three minutes in support of your three minutes and. And you're not giving me a proxy. I don't get six minutes to do so, but if you want it on the record and you're. I've done it for neighbors before and, and I'll do it again every, every chance I'm approached. In order for the public good. Now, I won't, I won't do it if I'm adamantly. Uh, you know, I'll probably go silent maybe on something if I'm not, if I'm not in agreement, uh. I don't recognize the value of it, but I'm gonna probably talk to you. You're gonna know that I have this type of concern, but I, I avail myself. If I'm gonna be there three hours a week myself, I appreciate your trust in. Sharing that and it's gonna be on stream, their answer. City council will respond and I always, you know, I always appreciate the, uh. I always appreciate the opportunity to know that I'm doing good for the community as well and. So in, in sharing those comments, sometimes I, sometimes I represent Facebook threads myself. Or sometimes I, I do those and it's usually where I own them also, so they are mine and they're not. And if I have the occasion to represent somebody else's, I will share specifically or confidentially, whatever, whatever it is. But that's, to me that you do that for your neighbors and that, that opportunity is there. Now, if you wanna talk more than three minutes about any topic, the talk shop's open to you and you're invited to the microphone. This platform is a community platform and it is wide open and available and you will get more than. Three minutes. You're gonna get more than thirty minutes if you want, because this is the talk shop and communication. Is absolutely vital to improving our community.
I agree.
So topics beyond third street, uh, which I like, I like the considerations. You mentioned one other that, uh, you had received.
Let's see. I don't know, cause the other one was billboards. We're starting to get some good talk about billboards, whether they should be. Um, considered or not. We talked about.
It seems the critical question is, does the city want billboards or not want billboards?
So two thousand, two thousand nine, uh, it seemed like council didn't want billboards, right?
Time Mayor Garen, uh, administrating leadership for the council.
What was not here, so that's good, good information to know. Um, and then, um. This council, we wanna have the discussion. It sounds like they're gonna be here for a long time, so I am not a fan of, of. Then having to get rid of one billboard so they can make one a, an electronic billboard, kinda like they had to do in Cheyenne. I'm not a fan of that. They have five here, uh, so they can keep the five.
Places that new billboards might exist. And be better for our entire community.
I am, I'm.
That wasn't discussed at all, which was my sixth point.
I am game for bringing some, some competition in, help drive the prices down, um, those kinds of things. I'm not in favor of, uh, what's, what's talked their money. I don't care what they sell that stuff for. I wouldn't want somebody to come into my business and say, hey, uh, you know, I know you're selling that iPhone for seven hundred dollars, but you gotta sell it for a hundred. I'm, I would never like.
You can't sell that for that. I don't care if it's new and never been used.
The, the question of censorship and, and who should be doing that, also not a city council member. Um, position I want to take because that's, that's their company, right? Um, and, and those kinds of things. So I think good discussion will come and somebody asked me and, and I started and I, and I think maybe.
Light pollution.
Right, and, and I remember the work session. I went back and watched it twice before that meeting, to be honest, and took a bunch of notes, um, and I didn't even get to talk.
Did you feel it was valuable?
The work session, the first one? Yeah, and then even then, um, when, uh, Ms. Getz got up and said that. The technology has changed since then and the white pollution is even less. Let's have this discussion now, cause now I'm all in, right? If it's even less than what it was, but, um, you know, there's a lot that, that went into that conversation. That I think was missed and city staff presenting it the, the way they did, um, in my opinion. I, I didn't like it. I felt like I was being preached to, to be honest, you know, beating that, beating that message in. And I went, uh, I'm all in, in, and there's a couple of us on council. I went made a formal, um, complaint about it. Went and talked to city manager about it, like, hey, like, you, you, you beat this point in too much.
Well, like I said, three, three times minimum stated staff position on.
Which took that meeting as long as it did and, um, I think one of his comments that. Um, irritated me, um, probably more than the others was, well, two thousand nine, council wanted this. So like, am I held to those, to those standards? Do I have to stay with what they agreed with or can we make our own, right?
I think, I think, I think that, uh, to make the factual point in time presentation of fact, is this originated, you know, our, our operating standard follows two thousand nine council action. Done.
Right, I think it was pushed that because they wanted it. Well, there's not, there are some agendas, but there's a lot of agendas that we changed past councils' ideas, right? Uh, because technology's different, the time's different. And I, I truly hope that, uh, I think it's April twenty second when this work session happens, that the public shows up and has some input in this. Uh, for me, and this is my opinion, my opinion only, uh, when I go to council and there's nobody in the, in the audience, except for a couple of people, like, that's discouraging. Like, I wanna have this dialogue, um, and, and so I urge people.
Well, you got elected, you didn't shut off the connectivity to your community, right?
I actually made it better. I have a website, um, and, and started it back up, to be honest.
What's that website?
It's just brandonnewman dot net, uh, so it's just my name dot net. I want a dot com, but a football player owns it and won't sell it to me. But, uh, I have a blog on there that I started, and, and they kinda, it's funny that you mentioned Facebook got rid of, like they're getting rid of some videos right after a certain time. The first website host that I was using did that to my blog too, cause I started blogging before I was even a council member. As I was running and I lost all those blogs and I was so devastated.
You don't wanna, if you don't wanna penal, be penalized by the whims of business and.
So we started, we found one that we could back up to where now I have access to all those blogs and, and my platforms on there and and what I stand for and how I vote and those kinds of things, but, uh, I was devastated when I lost all that. Cause some of these topics that we're talking about, like the, the transparency, communication, people showing up to council, like I have blogs about those. I remember going to a council meeting before I was on council and I was the only person there and I'm like, this isn't typical, right? Like people show up to these. Uh, and, and I'm finding out it's more typical that like there's, you know, the media, you guys are there. Um, a twenty-four seven host for us and city staff and maybe one or two other people and, and that's discouraging for me, to be honest.
I found, I found the, uh, March nineteenth visit from Representative Hegeman. I found it quite alarming personally. In the, in the conduct from six thirty to seven thirty was most concerning in, in that day. It was, it was quite concerning because attending county commissioner, Albany County Commissioner meetings and, and attending, attending city council meetings regularly, I find fair amount of order and, and, uh, mutual respect for the, for the most part, by and large. I think, I think, uh, Wednesday was raucous from, from my, and frankly, there was threatening and menacing behavior. There were actionable, uh, there were actionable offenses that occurred in that, in that environment, in the Griffin Theater that were absolutely detainable by law. There was, there was city of Laramie Police Department presence. There was, uh, State Highway Patrol that, that were present.
I think I saw a university.
And, and in any event, there was enough, there was enough law enforcement there that a tone could have been set to bring order to a, something that could have went south fast. And I'm sure that this is what, what Chief Brian might say with respect to not having arrested anyone out of, you know, I mean, the front row, I, there was, there was a hooded gentleman. It wasn't a gentleman, folks. He was, he was profane and he was, he, he may have been assaulted himself in, in, uh, someone touching him, but he absolutely intentionally was bumping and pushing and flailing, profane, uh, comments and he was threatening. No question about it. In a court of law, he was threatening. I would testify day in and day out, my video would show likewise. Now, I wasn't the only one capturing the moment in that, but I chose not to, I show not, chose not to reshare it because for me to go through and edit the audio and blur the profanity that, that takes it out of safe harbor would have been, I'd still been doing it. And I'm, I'm only, I'm only the resource that I am, uh, so I'm doing, I'm doing things by choice order in my case, but, but it just suffice it to say, we have a lot that we can learn from that particular session of a town hall in Albany County. And I didn't think we represented ourselves very well.
I think, I think where we did.
We showed up. I love that we showed up, but I think some, I think some visitors showed up as well. And they had, they had, they had right to show up. It was a public deal.
I talked to, I talked, so I was, I was in line. I got here, I think, about an hour.
About five fifteen, I saw.
Yeah, something like that, um, so I'm waiting in line. I'm talking to the people around me, talked to a student from Cheyenne who had, who had some good concerns.
And you were easily three hundredth.
Oh, easily, yeah. I didn't think I was gonna make it. I'm glad they changed it to the Griffin. So I, but I, I had my, I had my, um, City of Laramie Council badge on. Um, and that's the, that's the hat I was wearing that day. I wanted to, I wanted to know some stuff for city council. So I had, I had really good discussion, um, in line, to be honest. Oh, yeah, um, I had a, I had, I was scanning there and there was, uh, um, uh, I don't know how they identify, so I'm not gonna identify them, but, uh.
Brandon, let me interrupt you and we'll, we'll, uh, come back in another segment with more of detail about March nineteenth and what you learned.
Sure.
In line, uh, waiting to see Representative Hegeman. This is the Talk Shop and Perkins Restaurant and Bakery, your opportunity for all those yummy goodie muffins. We appreciate you listening to the Talk Shop and Chano's Village, five thirteen Boswell in Laramie. Your opportunity to cater to your staff or the community. Chano's Village.